Good evening. Welcome to the May 2, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
It would be my honor.
Please rise, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, will you please take roll?
Chair Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Massetti.
I'm here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
I second.
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Massetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vote carries five oh.
Thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
We had 14 emailed comments, and we have three PowerPoint presentations received after and will be posted on the city's website.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Will they get a chance to speak when the item comes up?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. These are for items not on the agenda. Are you -- do you have something? Are we good? I will now close the oral communications part. Consent calendar, approval of the April 18, 2022 Planning Commission minutes.
I move to approve.
I second.
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Massetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. No continued items, no scheduled matter, no new business. On to the public hearing, minor use permit, MUP 22-2 at 1650 Electric Avenue. Is there a report?
Yes, Chair and Commissioners. Assistant Planner Marco Cuevas will be making a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Chair Miller and Planning Commissioners. Tonight's proposal is from Efrain Coronado on behalf of Rich Ocean Investment Group, who filed an application for MUP 22-2 for the property located at 1615 Electric Avenue. So, the request isn't -- the proposal isn't a request to allow for external and internal alterations that are less than 25% of the interior walls and within an existing multifamily residence. That's nonconforming due to density setbacks and parking in the RHD, or residential high-density 20 zone. The image in front of you is the site location of the property, 1615 Electric. And the subject site is a 6,168-square-foot parcel located on the northwest corner of 17th Street and Electric Avenue in the Old Town area. The lot is currently developed with a three-story multifamily residence consisting of seven units and an 11-car garage. The subject site is surrounded by residential uses on all sides. This is a site plan of the property on the first floor. So, as previously mentioned, the subject's property is nonconforming due to density parking and setbacks. In regards to density, the Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for one residential unit for every 2,178 square feet of land area. The current property is 6,168 square feet, a parcel, and consists of seven existing units. So, under the current zoning regulations that pertain to density, only two units would be allowed. Furthermore, on the Seal Beach Municipal Code, allows residential uses in RHD 20 zone are required to provide two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. The subject site contains seven dwelling units, and by current standards is required to have a 14-car enclosed -- or 14-enclosed parking spaces. However, the site currently contains an 11-car garage parking, which makes the site deficient by three spaces. And regarding setbacks, the Seal Beach Municipal Code states that interior-lot properties in the RHD 20 zone are required to maintain an interior sideyard setback that is 10% of the lot width and a corner setback that is 15% of the lot width. Based on these dimensions, the development standard requires an interior setback that is six feet and a corner side setback of nine feet. The current property has an interior side setback of three feet, four inches, and a corner side setback of four feet, of four feet, two inches to six feet, four inches. Due to the subject property's nonconforming status, approval of a minor-use permit is required in order to carry out the alterations proposed by the applicant. So, on this, we have the second floor, second level of the floor plan. And subsection B of the Santa Monica Municipal Code, that is 11.4.40.015, allows for minor improvements which involve the removal or alteration to less than 25% of the structure's interior walls. The applicant proposes to reconfigure the bathroom and closet areas within each unit. Because the applicant's proposed improvements include interior remodeling, the Planning Commission's approval of a minor-use permit is required. No new habitable spaces proposed beyond the alterations requested as part of this minor-use permit. And the image in front of you is the third-floor plan from the unit. And as is previous, the owner wishes to just do interior remodeling mainly of the bathroom areas and some closet areas, which all constitute less than 25% of the interior spaces collectively. So, here we have some elevations of the property. So, as far as the extra improvements are concerned, the applicant is proposing to install architectural siding to various portions of the building. So, the areas that you see dark, and I apologize for the non-clarity of the image there, but the dark portions would be the wood siding, the architectural wood siding. They also propose to remove one of the three exterior staircases and extend the upper-level walkway, allowing them to connect, in addition to replacing stair rails. The alterations proposed on the site plan are consistent with the provisions of this code, and it will not intensify any of the nonconforming conditions. So, these are from the -- these are additional elevations from the interior of the property and from the street side. So, very much follows the same format where the extra alterations are minimal, just consisting of the architectural siding and derailing to the property. So, as part of our analysis, an MEP is required for the parcel having multiple nonconformities. The Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for improvements to nonconforming properties which involve the alteration to balconies and interior wall modifications that are less than 25% of the structure's interior walls. As previously mentioned, no new habitable space is proposed beyond the extra alterations requested as part of this permit. And the alterations proposed on the subject site plan are consistent with the provisions of this code and will not intensify any of the nonconformities to this property. So, with that, our staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 22-6 approving minor-use permit 22-2. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions? No? I will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to address the Commission? Is the applicant here?
Can you please come to the podium? Thank you.
My name is Efrain Coronado. As Marco Cuevas stated, the modifications that we're attempting to proceed with are don't intensify the use of the building, they continue the use. The only thing is just more beautification of the building, updating the look of it, more so than anything. We're not going to change any of the habitable spaces, they remain the same, same use, same occupancy. Only thing is just reconfiguration, just to make it a little bit more comfortable for the people inside. Some of those bathrooms were built in the '40s, and so they're a little bit tighter spaces. Same thing with the hallways. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him? No? Nobody else wants to speak on this? I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second it.
We have a vote-by-roll call, please.
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Massetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Senior Assistant City Attorney Grayson.
There is a 10-day appeal period from this decision. The appeal period starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Item C, conditional use permit 22-3 at 12300 Seal Beach Boulevard. Is there a report?
Yes, I'll be handling tonight's second item as well. So, tonight's second proposal is from Amelia Beltran. She is the applicant who filed a conditional use permit 22-2 -- I'm sorry, 22-3 for the property located at 12300 Seal Beach Boulevard. The proposal is requests to allow the construction of a 3,096-square-foot drive-up canopy structure within the parking lot of the Old Ranch Town Center in the commercial general zone. So, here's the site location of the property. So, the subject property is located on the east side of Seal Beach Boulevard between Town Center Drive and Plymouth Drive in the general commercial zone, and is developed as a multi-tenant shopping center. The center is comprised of eight parcels with both standalone commercial buildings and inline multi-tenant buildings. The applicant's parcel is located on the north portion of this property and is generally surrounded by residential uses to the north and east, with commercial uses to the west and south. So, on the site location, you could see the actual building that would be affected would be the Target building, the large wide image to the center. And the 24 drive-up spaces are -- would be at that image that's kind of highlighted in the red dash lines. So, here in greater detail, as a part of the Target Stores' initiative to enhance its drive-up program nationwide for guests and employees, Target is proposing to provide 24 drive-up stalls along the canopy structure for employees to deliver orders safely and comfortably to its guests. The canopy is proposed to be installed over 12 of the drive-up stalls to provide protection to employees who are frequently exposed to weather conditions, or a variety of weather conditions. The canopies are designed to provide shade from sun and cover from precipitation. So, once again, the image in front of you, you could see the Target Store as a large wide image to the white. And of course, this section here would be the 24 drive-up spaces, 12 of which are proposed to be covered with the canopy. So, the image in front of you is a very good representation of the intended look of the canopy structure. The canopy would be a permanent structure that is designed to be architecturally compatible with the store building and its surroundings, and will be constructed using high-quality materials. The canopy would also provide clear directional wayfinding for guests and eliminate driver confusion when searching for onsite stalls, and would encourage a safer flow of traffic for drivers and pedestrians. Lastly, the canopy would provide drive-up brand consistency for all the Target Stores. So, this is kind of like the display of the -- display board of what the materials would be consisting of. So, the canopy structure frame would be constructed from structural steel with a galvanized finish, and include a cover made with a weather-resistant, high-density fabric. The frame will range in height from 12 feet, 12 feet, six inches at the bottom of the eaves, to a height of approximately 17 feet at the highest point of the canopy structure. As a part of our analysis, the project site is adequate for the proposed use as the primary use of the building remains commercial retail use. And the canopy will be constructed with the parking lot fronting the store and built to cover 12 parking stalls. In addition, the canopy shade structure would be enhanced to be architecturally compatible with the center. With respect to parking, the existing uses at the project site currently have a surplus of 60 parking spaces, and the addition of the 24 drive-up stalls in conjunction with the canopy shade structure will not result in any net loss of parking. As this proposal will gain six spaces and relocation of existing drivers -- drive-up stalls within the property itself, and nine additional stalls will be created along the south side of the building. So, our recommended action is for the Planning Commission to adopt Resolution 22-7 approving conditional use permit 22-3. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions?
I have some questions, please. The picture that you showed where the canopy is going to be in relation to the building, look at that, right there. That shows it to the right, and to the right of that building is really Best Buy. Not Best Buy, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. So, is that canopy going to be in front of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or was it going to be off to the side?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Campbell. Yeah, as I mentioned in the presentation, this was a very good representation of what the canopy structure would look like. So, the intent was to get a visual of the canopy structure, although the actual location of this would be towards the left of the Target Store, so.
Can you go back to the other one that shows the location? That one?
Yes.
Now, that small area to the north is where the old Garden Center used to be. So, I am assuming that that is where they're going to put the canopy, is at the corner of the building.
On our site plan, it shows it where it's located now. Let's see. Yes, because as we see here in the parking diagram, it's, yeah, the 12 -- the 24 spaces, the 12 of which would be covered, but I'm not showing it in my plans as it would be towards the corner, but.
Well, if it's there, that's fine, because the Target -- that's the -- the Target Store is the end of the stores in the shopping area. But when you come down a little bit, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is right next to it. And according to the picture that you showed of the canopy, I thought, well, if they're going to put it in front of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that's not going to work for those folks. But I'm glad to see that it's over there on the corner. That's fine.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? I will now open the public hearing. Is anybody here to talk about this one? Is the applicant here that wants to address the Commission? No? No comment? Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Call for a motion and a second? I move to approve.
I second.
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Massetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. Senior Assistant City Attorney Grayson.
There is a 10-day appeal period from this decision, which starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Item D, conditional use permit 22-1. Is there a report?
Yes, Chair, if you'll allow us just a moment to get set up our interim senior planner, Art Bashmakian, will be making the presentation. But I would like to very quickly note that we have been brought to our attention a small typo in the staff report that I just wanted to clarify very briefly. So, if you're looking at what's kind of the third page of the staff report, under analysis, it states that it's discussing the findings. So, this conditional use permit is slightly different than the one we just heard, because this is part of the Main Street specific plan. So, there are two sets of findings, and the first one is the standard findings for a conditional use permit. There are five of those. There are an additional four findings with relation to the specific plan. The staff report says there are five findings, five general findings, and then an additional five findings for the specific plan. There are only four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Planning Commission, Art Bashmakian, interim senior planner. This conditional use permit 22-1 was before you in March. You conducted the public hearing and took action, but soon afterwards, we learned that the notice was not published in newspaper, and therefore, we have to have this hearing again and publish the notice, and so on. So, my presentation will basically be what I presented to you during our virtual meeting about a month ago. So, the proposal is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a business, happens to be a real estate office, on the ground floor along Main Street within the Main Street specific plan zoning district. This slide shows the general location and the subject site outlined in red. And this is a close-up of that site, showing the entire property, which has, I believe, two units towards the back, and the front has two tenant spaces, and the subject tenant spaces, spaces in green. And this is a street view of the subject tenant space outlined in yellow, the interior space. So, Main Street specific plan has a vision, and I'm not going to read the entire vision statement, but a key component of the vision statement reads that "a pedestrian-oriented area where people walk and feel safe on the street at night. The area with both architectural and economic diversity with a mix of offices and businesses." The plan further states that -- the plan recognizes that Main Street is the heart and soul of Seal Beach, mentions that the commercial uses are key to the area's special character, and Commercial Center has been able to retain its small-town character due to those businesses that depend on and support adjoining residential development. The specific plan allows office uses, professional business office uses, on Main Street on the second floor by right, but on the ground floor, it requires a conditional use permit, which allows the city to consider offices on a case-by-case basis. So, there is a criteria that an office use must meet the findings, the general findings for a conditional use permit, in addition to special findings that are part of the specific plan, which I'll mention in a moment. This slide shows the Main Street specific plan area, primarily Main Street, and also existing office uses that are currently located within Main Street. There's a law office, a two-story building, a realty office, and Allstate Insurance. The proposed office is highlighted in orange down here. When staff was interacting with the applicant, we did mention to the applicant that since the conditional use permit is required for office uses, and it is a pedestrian-oriented area, there's a concern that office uses may not be generally favored, unless if they're maybe designed in a way to enhance or not conflict with the pedestrian-oriented vision. With that, the applicant agreed to make their office use to mimic a retail use by making the front 50 percent -- 50 -- the front half of the property or the tenant space to look like a retail space, and also to create some window display that would enhance and not conflict with the pedestrian-oriented vision. And staff has made recommendations with conditions of approval to ensure that this use does have this retail component, or mimics a retail component, within the front. Otherwise, staff would not have recommended approval. As I mentioned, there are the two sets of findings. One is your standard conditional use permit findings, and the other is unique to the Main Street specific plan. The findings somewhat overlap, but the Main Street specific plan findings, which consist of four different elements. Number one states that the proposed use is consistent with the intent and purpose and vision established for the Main Street specific plan. Finding number two, the proposed use does not conflict with the specific plan's goals to establish and maintain a balanced mix of uses that serves the needs of both local and non-local populations. Number three, the use will contribute to unique character of Main Street and the qualities that provide the Main Street as a sense of identity. And the last finding, which is not applicable in this case, it deals with the city council policy related to alcohol-serving uses. So, based on the staff's analysis, in support of the findings, staff, as we did last time, recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the Resolution 22-08 approving conditional use permit 22-1. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner comments, questions? I've got quite a few. Can you -- the three offices that are currently in the 300 block, do those all have CUPs?
I looked for CUP for Allstate, I could not find, but the others, I could not find any CUPs for those uses. We may have, it's difficult to find the records. But I did find some information on the two-story attorney's office. I believe that was constructed probably before some of these requirements were in place.
So, they're all grandfathered in, is the assumption?
That's my assumption, yes.
That's correct, Chair.
Thank you. The four findings, do you have a slide of that? The ones you mentioned?
I don't have the slide of the findings.
No, not right now.
But I could, again, read those findings if that helps.
Yeah, do you mind reading them one more time?
Sure. "The proposed use is consistent with the intent and purpose and vision established for the Main Street specific plan. Number two, the proposed use does not conflict with the specific plan's goals -- goal to establish and maintain a balanced mix of uses that serves the needs of both local and non-local populations. Number three, the use will contribute to the unique character of Main Street and the qualities that provide the Main Street a sense of identity. And number four, the proposed use complies with all applicable city council policies, such as the policies that council has adopted concerning alcohol-serving uses."
Thank you. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Sounds good. I will now open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this?
Can I suggest you allow the applicant to speak first?
Speak first, okay. Would the applicant like to address the Commission first?
Okay, I had to write you guys a letter, because I am so nervous that I won't be able to just speak to all of you without putting my thoughts on the paper, so you would just give me a second. So, my name is Deborah Geter, and, I'm sorry, and I've been down this road before with all of you in March, and not with the public, because it was Zoom. But basically, dear city of Seal Beach, I fell in love with your town and have many friends who have shared fond memories of growing up in the area, eating the local -- in the local restaurants and working, and we felt that little space at 128 Main was just perfect for our company. Never in my wildest dreams did I expect to get the pushback and the uncomfortable issues that have arose, with letters going out to the public, making me feel like this was not very fair to me. So, I wasn't able to speak, but I did learn long ago that life is not always fair. So, I am here to hopefully address your concerns and let you know who we are as a company and who I am as a woman. So, basically, I am a woman-owned business, 100% owner of my company. So, basically, I am a woman-owned business, 100% owner of my company. We are mad volunteers. We volunteer for pet adoptions and Red Cross and Rotary Club and Chamber of Commerce and our Ocean Festival and Putting on the Glitz, but most importantly, our real estate company highlights local businesses in our area. We, we feel like we're an information center for the public walking in from out of town or, you know, someone in town that just wants information. We direct them to stores, we direct them to restaurants, we put a newsletter together highlighting all of those businesses because we want to be the heart and soul of the community. And I know I'm an outsider to all of you, but the people that will be working in that space, although they're calling it a branch office, Jenny has been in Seal Beach for just under 20 years, and Sarah and Raphael live and work right around here with best friends in town. This is, you know, I may be the outsider from San Clemente, but I love your town, but that's besides the point, but these people are local. So besides that, we are volunteers for Red Cross, FAM, Chamber of Commerce, who, and highlighting businesses, I also wanted to address that our doors are wide open. I submitted some slides that maybe Dana will show later, but our doors are open 9 to 6, and we are not an office the way that you guys might think. Our doors are open, in the warmer months, our doors are open longer, and we have an art gallery wall from local artists, and right now it's, it's real. So Art said we mimic a retail store, and thank you, Art, for presenting our company the way that you did, but it's not a, we're actually selling art, we're actually selling home decor. So I just want to let you know, the merchandise that's for sale is home decor, but you're going to see it in the open houses, and so somebody in town said that we're a staging company, we are not a staging company, but you might find something in an open house and then see it in the store. Or we might pair up with some of the local stores that have home decor and highlight their items. So I want you to know, the agents in the space, the two that are sitting there would answer questions about real estate, they would, you know, speak to the public in whatever capacity is needed, and I just want you to know, I'm done now, there is nothing here but 100% honesty. Whether you agree with, you know, what we wanted to do and our vision, that's fine, but I want you to know, I stand here every day as a human being, trying to give, to do my best work as a human and as a businesswoman, and I, my word is my bond. So when we say there will be candles and things that say Seal Beach, we are not kidding, we are not fronting for anything. It's a very small space, and 50% of it is actually retail because I want to contribute to this city. So anyway, now you can all say what you need, thank you very much.
We have your, your pictures if you wanted to go through them.
So yeah.
Art, if you could bring them up, please.
Yeah, I'll just show you that, this, okay, so we have a putting green, we're not your typical real estate company, we want something different and outside the box. That's a putting green, people stop and they putt, oh, sorry, I'm a big mouth, but, okay, okay. So, so that is our office, that does not look like, I don't think that looks like what you're assuming a typical real estate office would look like, that's our office, that's our beach cleanup, this is what we do. We are givers, and that's our culture, and we love that, and it's not for anything, it's just because we love humans and we take care of people. That's our pumpkin patch, those are all free pumpkins, we donate the pumpkins to the families. Yeah, I did a little too much on the pumpkin patch. We had a local band, we sponsored the band, we gave out food, there's Putting on the Glitz, we gave out donuts. So we have a much bigger area, but I hope you see our involvement with the community. We did a drink for charity at the local restaurants, and we raised quite a lot of money. There's our group having lunch at our local establishment here. We did a, we had all the retailers come in and do that for the holidays. There's some items that are real that you can buy. Another, these are all things that we pay for that we want to give. And I don't want to bore everybody, I think that's, there it is, yeah, that's pretty much all of our events, thank you so much.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, please.
Did you look into any second-floor spaces? I know there's a few.
Yes.
Empty.
So I did look at one, but it just doesn't fit, we're, we're a, we like to get nose-to-nose with people, and there was one, I think, I think it's like you go up, you go up the stairs and there's a long, narrow hallway, and I think an attorney might be downstairs. It just did not feel like the vibe that, that I'm trying to show you that we portray in South County. We just want to be amongst the people, that's how we do our thing, you know, that's just, yeah. So we did look, we did, and it looked a little like, the floor plan wasn't great and you had to go up a long corridor, I think it would be hard for some of our clients to actually even get up all those stairs, so. Anything else for me?
Anybody have any questions for? No?
Sorry if I was rambling, I'm just impassioned about this, so.
Would anybody like, from the public, like to speak now? If you could, please state your name.
All right. Hello, my name is Rob Jankie, and I'm president of the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'm, I'm, thank you for giving me an opportunity to share my thoughts, and I too, extremely nervous, I'm just an engineer selling coffee now, and I've been here on Main Street for, for almost 12 years now. And, and let me start off by saying, Seal Beach welcomes you, we really do. Our only concern is the location affecting the cadence of the street, so please don't take this personally. It wasn't intended for that, I sense that, and that's really not what this is about, okay? I love your passion, and I love what you're doing with your company, I'd love to have a lot of that here, I think it would really help our community. We just, it's hard for us at that location, and, and let me share with you all where, where I'm coming from on that.
Excuse me?
Yes?
This is the Planning Commission meeting, can you address the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry.
Do you need the mic? Thank you.
I, I just, I could tell she was very, anyway, you're right. Let me, so, our concern is the governance of Main Street, and I've, I've been here for like 12 years, and I've really seen it grow. A lot of fantastic things have been done by the city to enhance it, and it is, it has shown to grow, and actually, believe it or not, I think COVID actually helped our city because a lot of people were looking for places to go that didn't have to get on an airplane, and we've been busier now as a result. That's because we now have green areas, we have decorative lights, the intersections are beautiful, so it brings people in. So along with that, we have a lot of very, we have a unique culture here, we have a lot of entrepreneurs that are, that are small, independent businesses that thrive in this kind of environment. They were big-box things, it wouldn't do so well, but if we have a lot of professional offices where their doors open up right on Main Street, I have some big reservations. You mentioned, I noticed, there was a real estate office and a law office and Allstate. Those also are the part of Main Street that doesn't have a whole lot of foot traffic, okay? So that's what happens when you put in a professional office on Main Street, it tends to slow, people, they want to come here, oh, let's, let's have lunch, or let's have dinner, and then after dinner, walk around, go on the pier, oh, let's have an ice cream or coffee. So it, I'm, I'm, we're really, the chamber's concerned about that cadence being upset. The, the other thing is that in the past, I know a number of other professional offices that have wanted to be on Main Street for that additional visibility, but they were turned down. So that if this location were given the opportunity, I imagine there'd be a whole bunch more that would come afterwards, and then how do you pick who's, who can come and who can't? And then, so, and then if you start saying yes to everyone, then the whole Main Street cadence kind of gets affected. And this is part of my livelihood, I love Main Street. I've been here, like I said, for over 12 years, and it's, it's a wonderful, unique town, actually, you don't see in California very much anymore. It's a part of history, actually, a lot of places have gone via way, like Huntington Beach that are totally commercial, and that's not what we are. And I, and I can, I imagine all of you don't want that either, we're, we're the, what is it, Mayberry on the Sea, and, and we love our town, and that's why we're here. Ultimately, I think we're all here for the same goal, we want to have a strong downtown, and we're concerned about it, and that's why we're here. And again, we're not, got to dress over here, we are not picking on, on Deborah Geter. That, that isn't the focus here, it's the placement of this kind of business.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. That, that, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for serving, I appreciate it. I'm Carla Watson, I've lived in town nearly 60 years. I've served on the Main Street Specific Plan, been involved in almost every activity in town, and one of the great things, the reason I handed you the picture of our Christmas card is every year we hand out cards showing our patronage of Main Street. Main Street is a way of life, I've never been Mayberry by the Sea, I'm more like Ed Humes who said that it's one of the best beach towns on the whole state of California. Because we have a mentality of trying to be kind to one another, trying to promote our businesses, shop Main Street first was often our, our slogan, our logo, whatever, this should never have gotten this far. There was a Main Street Specific Plan, some great real estate offices were grandfathered in, Allstate was grandfathered in, there was a reason. This is like, and I have nothing against the applicant, it sounds like the heart's in the right place, but this should never have been, it should never have gotten this far. You've got to understand the history of Seal Beach, and I hope you do, and honor the people who are representing a district, listen to them. Chairman Miller, listen to what he has to say about Old Town and Seal Beach, listen to Patty Campbell, when she talks about College Bar East, listen to people, we are representative, you all represent the entire city, but you really listen to people. We worked for years to get votes so that we could make sure that this city was small-town, safe. I hope that you will turn this down. I hope the applicant will find a second story and be able to sell gifts or whatever, but it shouldn't be here, it shouldn't be here. Longtime residents, whether I was running the Roughwater Swim, or trying to save the Green Belt, or Centennial, Main Street were the first we went to, those were the people who supported us, always, always. So please turn this down, it does not belong in this town. These, you heard the Chamber of Commerce president talk about, these businesses, yes, COVID may have been good for restaurants and so forth because they could build, but other businesses suffered, and we don't need any more places to compete with those unless it's a regular business. You could have anybody come in and say they're going to do this, say they're going to do that in order to get a ground floor, so let's not do that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cory DeLeone, and I am representing, I am also representing the Seal Beach Chamber. I am past president and current GAC chair, as well as treasurer, lots of little hats. So we did issue an official oppose letter that you should have in your packet, we'd like it read for the record. On behalf of the Seal Beach Chamber, I am writing in opposition to the application for the conditional use permit 22-1 for Deborah Gaitner at 128 Main Street in Seal Beach. The approval would establish standards and open the door for additional exceptions to the Main Street Specific Plan, Policy 1, Article 12.5, Section 28-1250, permitted uses A. Item 9 and 10 specifically direct professional offices facing Main Street or Ocean are to be on the second floor and above only, or not facing Main Street or Ocean Avenue. First and foremost, the Chamber wishes to reiterate its commitment and partnership to the city and all incoming existing businesses in Seal Beach. Our crown jewel is Main Street in Seal Beach, and it is within this context that we oppose the conditional use permit. Main Street, the Main Street Specific Plan established, I apologize, I wrote it, established in 1996, it was reaffirmed in 1996, states that the businesses traditionally found in a small-town village center are important to be retained. Year after year, this plan has been reaffirmed, most recently, that we could find on March 20th in the City Council workshop to preserve the small-town character, as quoted by 2020 mayor at the time, Shelley Sastarsik, and current City Council member. The intentionally managed government has fostered the quaint family shopping and dining environment that has resulted in a cadence of increased traffic while maintaining the vibrancy that continues to draw visitors. The continued effort is set forth in the Main Street Specific Plan include new green areas, decorative streetlights, attractive intersections, old-town-style beaches with memorial, benches with memorial plates in conjunction with the directive to keep professional offices off Main Street. It all works cohesively to protect and preserve our community. The Seal, the city of Seal Beach has been clear in its vision to enhance the quality of life and preserve our small-town character. The City Chamber, the Seal Beach Chamber's mission statement to promote and grow business and enhance the quality of life in the Seal Beach community aligns with city goals. As a collective whole, the Board of Directors voted to oppose the conditional use permit on our concern that if this permit is approved, it will open the door to other professional offices facing Main Street, which would absorb desirable Main Street-facing real estate, leaving less space for retail restaurants that fit within the vision established for Seal Beach. The approval of CUP 22-1 has the potential to significantly change the face of Main Street. We have further concerns, the approval of this CUP application will create a slew of additional professional office CUP applications, creating a significant workload on the city and impact this committee. The Chamber welcomes all businesses and is happy to assist and facilitate finding a location for this real estate to grow, to grow that follows the direction set forth by the Main Street Specific Plan. We believe part of the reason this specific business would like to establish itself in Seal Beach is because of the intentional effort involved in shaping the city and the demographic it supports. We find it counterintuitive.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
To create inroads, to changing what makes our, our small town so special and desirable. There is room for real estate offices to thrive in Seal Beach off Main Street, and we welcome them with open arms. Thank you, the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce Executive Board, on behalf of the Seal Beach Chamber Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorette Murfree, good evening. You know, I can't say anything as eloquently as you just did, and I'm only up here to just repeat what other people have already said, because I think the more voices, the better everybody's going to hear it, so I'm hoping everybody else that's here that has a voice should at least get up here and say what they think. So to me, this is like a no-brainer, I can't, I am, I'm surprised we're even all here. I can't, I'm surprised we're even all here. You know, there is so many people that have offices and businesses and real estate offices that operate very similar to the applicant's real estate office that would love to be on Main Street. And guarantee you that if this gets approved, there's going to be a slew of other people that are going to want to do the same thing. So this is absolutely nothing against this applicant. It is no, you know, there's really, I understand it's emotional for her, but nobody is against her. It has nothing to do with her. There are so many people that run real estate businesses in this town, very similar to hers, that would love to have an office on Main Street. And it's just, it takes away from what Main Street is all about. You know, it's, just was talking to people in my street today, and everybody's like, yeah, we should have shops, we should have restaurants, bars. This is what Main Street is about. Nobody wants to, you know, businesses on Main Street. And if it is approved, you know, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be following suit. And I guess that needs to be discussed. Like, how does that get handled in that case? You know, what is that going to look like? You know, is that, then everybody's going to get approved? That puts some pretty things in the window? You know, it's like, doesn't seem like that's what the plan is. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sharon, and I'm a Seal Beach homeowner, and I'll be very quick. I oppose this, nothing personal about her. I'm sure her store would be lovely. But I shop Main Street. I spend all my money on Main Street as well as my family. And I just don't think it would benefit it. I don't think having a commercial or a business like that. It needs more stores, more clothing, more restaurants, bars, the same things that Lorette was talking about. Thanks.
Good evening. Frank Carver Hall, local business owner, Chamber member, and so forth. I happen to have an office, I'm in real estate also, on Ocean. New owner bought it. He decided to take over. Then he decided he wanted to go back. I tried to get back in. Sorry, Mr. Carver Hall, you no longer meet the requirements because you were grandfathered. I happen to be a property manager for the lot on 245 Main Street where First Team was there for over 20 years. I took over the building for my client, and of course, he decided he wanted to raise the rent, so it made sense. We had a little bit of disagreement on what the new rent should be with First Team. They were there for over 20 years. A month later, they decided to come back. When they came back to the city to get back in, they were denied. That's somebody who's here for over 20 years. Additionally, the insurance company, I'm not sure who it was, was leased out a space on the corner of Electric and Main. They were, after they signed the lease, they were forced to leave. Having said those three scenarios, it makes no sense for this to have happened. It makes absolutely no sense. And in addition to that, you have created the exact footsteps of what I will take once this is approved of how, and anybody who wants to have a real estate office on Main Street, because you laid it all out. So I don't know how this passed. It makes no sense. I showed, I gave you three examples of people who have been around for a long time, who happened to be in real estate or sometime, some type of non-retail service, and were denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kim. I too will read because I feel nervous in front of everybody. But I'm in a unique position in that I'm a real estate broker in town, as well as a 30-year resident and a merchant on Main Street for the last 16 years. So I can see both sides of it. And I understand that a Realtor wants to come to town to grow her business on Main Street, and I think every Realtor in town would love to have a shop on Main Street. But I think they all understand that it's not for the greater good of the street or the community. I would welcome another Realtor, but I think they need to be off of Main Street upstairs and play by the rules, as has every other Realtor in town. We currently have 12 real estate offices just off of Main Street. There are three actually in the 100 block. All of them are off of Main Street. They've all played by the rules. There are a couple in the 200 block, there are several in the 300 block upstairs, there's some over off of Pacific Coast Highway, some just off PCH, and some in the Vons Shopping Center. All of these Realtors have played by the rules. They're all residents, most of them, I think, and they understand that it's not for the best to have a real estate office on Main Street. I think if we allow one Realtor to have a retail space, then it makes sense that we must allow the insurance agent, the mortgage company, the law office, and then it changes the whole look and feel of the street. I think one other thing to me that is a little bit concerning is it seems to me that it's a little misleading to set up shop as a retail store and to have a consumer walk-in only to be approached by a real estate broker. I don't think that that's the type of business that we should be engaged in in misleading the public. Is it a real estate office, or is it a retail store? It seems a bit misleading. I could understand a conditional use permit. I think if it was something where it brought something so unique and so different and so special to the community, but I just don't see that as a space here. And I guess the other thing is, you know, I suppose that we could ask, one might ask if an insurance agent dresses up their window with flashlights, earthquake kits, and ring doorbells, and calls them a retail store, is that fair? Again, I just don't think we should open that can of worms. At the end of the day, it's a real estate office. As a merchant, from a merchant's point of view, I don't think that we can afford to give up another retail space. We only have, each side of the block has 15 shops. As opposed to San Clemente, one side of one block in San Clemente has 37 to 40 shops. We don't have that. We have 15 on one shop, on one side of the street. As a retail store, we need other stores to support one another. The customers of my store are going to shop, the other stores, their customers are going to shop my store. I don't see where this real estate office is anyway going to contribute to the livelihood of the other businesses in town. And the other thing, I kind of think that it's not fair that other landlords in town have held to the retail only. And why is this landlord now allowed to, you know, to veer off from that? Does the city have the manpower to police this? I think we have better things to spend our time on. I think I read somewhere that the city is actually having to pull from other departments to handle the real estate issue that the city is having to deal with. Who's going to police this? And then again, the plan emphasizes pedestrian-oriented retail activities and ground-floor uses for retail activities. And again, I think people come to Main Street to walk, shop, and dine, not to find a Realtor, get a mortgage, or make a doctor's appointment. We have all of these services just a few steps away. And I'm not saying no to a real estate office, I'm just saying not on Main Street. It's worked really well for us for many years. I think our town is the envy of every other beach town, and that's for good reason. And again, I think that, you know, you guys are all representing your districts. I think that a lot of your residents would be pretty upset if they came to Main Street to find their favorite shop being replaced by a little office, a retail office, a real estate office, an insurance office. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Jan Stocken, and I wish I had volunteered to be first, because there's a lot of eloquent speakers out there. But I want to quote from the Main Street specific plan that says, "What would Seal Beach be like without Main Street? Main Streets like Seal Beach have disappeared all over the country. We are what everybody wants in a beach town." One of the factors that makes small-town village charm of Seal Beach's Main Street is it's a constrained area, which means we have the 100 block, the 200 block, and the 300 block. The 300 block has already got some offices on the ground floor, and it doesn't have the same feel that the first two blocks have, the 100 and the 200 block. I think we have to work really, really hard to save the 100 and the 200 block so that it has the beach vibe that people are used to. In the staff report, it says there are over 100 uses along Main Street, mostly consisting of eating, drinking, retail, and personal improvement. And then it shows the two existing, well, I guess it's three, existing professional and business offices in the third block. And it goes on to say, "An additional business office will not alter the current balance of mixed uses as professional and business office uses will constitute less than 5%." But I think it misses the point, that those are in the third block, and the charm now is in blocks one and two. And I also would like to make the point about, what about all those other offices that are on the second and third floor? Are they going to come ask to be on the first floor? And what about the dozens of real estate offices? I think allowing office space fronting Main Street on the first floor opens the door for other spaces, and it will adversely change the surrounding two blocks to pedestrian traffic. There's one section in here that makes my point exactly, and it says... Oh. Furthermore, "Out of more than 100 businesses on the ground floor on Main Street, one additional office space will not compromise the current pedestrian-oriented environment." And yet, I believe one will, because it will open the door. And we don't want that in the first two blocks. Thank you.
I know I already spoke, but I forgot to mention that I have 25 signatures from Main Street merchants that oppose this.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Lupezko, longtime resident. And it's nice to see you all. Nick, nice to see you away from the garden. The Main Street specific plan is just that. It was a learning device, and it was after many years of learning from some battles that we've had in this town to protect our prized jewels. Many decades ago, there was a battle to try and save our Green Belt. If residents had not come out, there'd be condos the whole length of town on our Green Belt. Many years ago, we had to come out and fight putting parking meters on Main Street. We knew that the merchants would lose if people had to pay and now put credit cards in their parking meters to come down and eat, drink, shop, and wine and dine. And a few years ago, we had to fight just to save what little percentage we ended up with down at DWP property for our park that was granted to us. And now here we are, trying to save once again Main Street. The specific plan calls for retail dinner, or food and beverages. If you continue to allow non-retail activity on Main Street, it's a known fact that landlords can raise rents because offices, businesses can command a higher rent, pay a higher rent. And once we open the floodgates to this precedence that city staff should not have offered to you to approve, and four of you last vote did approve, we need you all to listen to Chairman Miller, to Patty Campbell, who was here during the Main Street specific plan. She sat on this dais during those talks. Listen to them. We need support from Leisure World as we support you. The downtown people support you up there. And know and learn that people come to this crown jewel, our Main Street, they don't go to College Park East, they don't walk up to the hill, and they definitely don't go up to Leisure World because they can't get past your security. They are here to downtown for our pier and our Main Street. So thank you for your service and allowing us to talk.
Thank you.
Good evening. I didn't come here planning on speaking, but after listening to everybody, I felt like I needed to come up and share my opinion. I am opposed to the real estate opening, and nothing personal, but I want to share with you that I have had a store, two stores, one for almost 30 years, and then another for 10, on the street. I cannot tell you on a daily basis, over and over, how often I hear, "This is my favorite town." We come here because we can relax, we feel safe, we can have lunch, dinner, drinks, and shop, and we just love it here. I feel that, again, like everybody else has said, that if we open up the door where we let one in, the door is going to be open for many others. I just really want our town to stay the way it is. And I can't tell you how many times I have heard that we don't want to shop Main Street, Huntington Beach, we don't want to shop Laguna Beach, we love Seal Beach, and we love Seal Beach the way it is. And so I hope that you respect this. I know that our stores bring a lot of tax dollars into the city, and that we love our town, and we have plenty of companies that have fundraisers for many of things, and we all hop on board and donate to it. And I feel that we do like an incredible job to support everybody. And anyhow, that's how I feel. And by the way, my name is Lisa Haney. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back, Joyce.
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town resident, 50 years, longer than any of you here. I've seen it all on Main Street. And I was there when the dentist office was told, "No, you can't be there." I was here when the gym was told, "No, you can't be on Main Street." The insurance broker was told, "No, you can't be on Main Street." The mortgage broker was told, "No, you can't be on Main Street." And real estate was told, "No, you can't be on Main Street." And I want to tell you, that's a little store. I don't mind her coming into town. We need the tax, we need the money off the homes that are sold. What is it, 15% for everyone with a home? We need that. I don't mind her coming in. But we have the Lions Club here that puts on all kinds of breakfast and food and the coming out. And they're one of the best in the country, the Lions Club here in Seal Beach. And we also have the car show that the Chamber put on with the Lions Club. We have all kinds of things going on down in Old Town. Coming up is going to be the Mother's Day over there on the park. So, I mean, if she wants to come in town, and she don't want to go to that second-story floor, I think there's a little store up on the 100 block in the gate, a little tiny place. Because when you're talking about that little store on Main Street, 128, I've been in there a couple of times. You can't get all those people in there with all of the things you want to sell. You can't. I've been in there. The people leased that store, it was like they bought everything at a swap meet, and they brought it down there trying to sell it. And they knew they couldn't put that much stuff in that little And they knew they couldn't put that much stuff in that little store. So they went to Huntington Beach, and they put a sign up for rent, because I'm sure they had to sign at least a three- or five-year lease. So they went to Huntington Beach, and all of a sudden, here's a sign in the door from a Realtor, from somewhere in Huntington Beach, or 714 area code. And I called him up and asked him, "How much is that store?" $2,900. $2,900. And you can't get a whole group of people like she's talking in there. I went in that store. It's small. And if you start this, then we will not be getting sales tax revenue to fix our streets. Have you seen them? They need to be fixed bad. I sent all the city council members the pictures. I'll send them all to you guys, so you can see the pictures. But it's just not possible to have another Realtor say that she's going to sell things in the front and have an office in the back. That store's too large, and then all of a sudden, we'll all be going, "We want to be there." And so what do you do then? Because we need sales tax. If you sell a house, then we get 15% of the tax back to the city. But we're behind in paying for the Main Street to be fixed. We're behind. Where's the money for the pier? Well, that's for the city council. I'll be there next week, so. We, if she wants to come down here, then there's a place over there on PCH where there's another real estate office on the ground floor, and I-
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Well, let's see. Also, we have a problem with in-lug parking. How are they going to pay for in-lug parking as well? Everybody down on Main Street has to pay for in-lug parking. Thank you.
Hello. I'm your neighbor. My name is Mike. This is what I said hundreds of times, more than 10 years ago, when the two-story, three-story controversy erupted in Seal Beach. And I can tell you from personal experience, and there are people in this room, both on for the two-story side and against the two-story side, that in all the districts of Seal Beach, Old Town, the Hill, College Park East, College Park West, and Leisure World, 73% of the voters voted to keep a two-story height limit, to keep Old Town with a village feel. And I would love to quiz every one of you and ask you, which district had the greatest percentage voting for the two-story height limit? And it was Leisure World. Leisure World residents wanted the two-story limit more than anybody else. So all this is emotional, it's all in the past, but I think the simplest way to look at this is if this is a code decision, this is a legal decision, this business should not be allowed to be there. Something, a business that mimics another business is not truly a business against it.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jim Clissannon. I've been a resident of Seal Beach since 1966, schoolteacher, coach, the Anaheim District for a bunch of years. And about 45 years ago, I decided to get a real estate license so I could make a little more money, buy a bigger house for my family. And I came in the hard way. I learned the hard way. The people that come today, my comment would then to be, "Where were you 45 years ago, when you had to work your butt off to be able to do business in this town?" And this is not a Mayberry for me. I happened to come through town in '66. On the way to Newport, with a friend, we were going to the cannery to drink some beer and meet some women. But we turned in on 16th, 13th Street for a two-bedroom, one-bath house for sale, and I went through it. And an old guy like me with his dog was there, and the carpet was peed on, and everything was a mess. But, long story short, I end up buying the property for $28,500. And it ended up putting me into the real estate business and that. The only thing I want to say to you, this is not my Mayberry, this is my touch of heaven, a notch above Mayberry. So you've heard your community speak, and you need to take that into consideration and make the right decision. And I wish good luck to the lady who wants to bring a real estate office into town to find a place that'll work for her. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Would the applicant like to address, rebuttal anything one more time?
I don't know what else to say. I've made everybody-
Yeah, you're not-
Do you mind coming to the podium to speak? Thank you.
I truly don't know what else to say. At least, this part of the population has spoken. There was one lady that troubled me, though, and she kept saying that I was misleading, and that is not true. Everything that I stated to you guys is truth. It would be a retail, 50% of a retail store, that is what I committed to, that is the truth. You could check on it. So there was one person that I did, the person with the 25 signatures. I guess you should know that there was a person on Main Street that went door-to-door and actually sent a letter out, because I got a copy of it, and put all of your emails on it, encouraged everyone to sort of do this, you know, show up and do their thing, and that's fine. But I just feel like some of that was false information, and I don't think that that's accurate. What I stated is accurate. 50% retail, tax goes to the city, Jenny runs the shop, and yes, in the back, there are two desks, and you'll see Raphael and Sarah there. This is not a big conglomerate, and that's all. And thank you so much for your time. I know you've got your hands full right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Oh, nope, I will not. Sorry.
One more thing. I'm sorry. The word that bothered me the most, am I okay?
City attorney, she already spoke, is that okay?
No, it's up to the chair. We really only allow people one opportunity to speak.
Okay. It's a whole mimicking thing. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Ruth Endless Summer. Thank you for all your time. I didn't want to get up and talk, but what Lisa's thing was with all this got, that it's going to mimic and look like. So speaking from, those are the words that were used. If you guys replay the recording, that's what was used a lot. And for us that own stores that are heart and soul, I'm also a resident of Seal Beach. I love this town. I love Main Street. The same thing about putting another, an office, and it's not that we're against her, it's about, it sets a precedence that we cannot have. When I first got the store about five years ago, I was told, "Do not buy. This town is about to turn into all offices." So sitting here, listening to what's been going on with this petition, is that that's what this town's trying to start to do. And I love this town, this is where I live, this is where I have my business, and so I'm just asking you guys, we don't want it. And yeah, the word mimicking like is what was getting to all of us, because that's the point. We don't want a real estate store that looks like a store, an office, or mimics a store. This is our stores, and people come to this town for stores. We don't want to be Huntington Beach, and we love our town, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. And we have commissioners debate, talking, speaking. I have a couple of things, if I can go first, if you don't mind Patty. My first thing I want to say is that I go out to eat a lot, and I have t-shirts from restaurants. It's a restaurant at the end of the day. Like, I have glasses from cups, I have candles, I have all kinds of cool stuff, but at the end of the day, it's a restaurant. So at the end of the day, the business is a real estate office, correct? And then, my second thing is that, actually, I think I'll wait on that part. Anybody else like to speak?
I have some comments to make. This is the Main Street specific plan. It was voted on in '96. How many of you here tonight were here in '96? Okay. Those of you who are here, know how hard everybody worked to craft this document, okay? So often, when you have a document that's old, new people come into City Hall, and they forget, or they don't even know, what effort was done to create a document that rules the city, okay? Staff, probably the people working for the city now haven't been here more than 10 years. Anybody been here more than 10 years working for the city? You, okay, Dana. But what I'm just saying is, we've had a tremendous turnover at City Hall, so that the people at City Hall don't remember it. And there's a lot of documents that they don't know the history of, because they didn't see the effort that everybody went through to put the document together. And I know, because I was here, and I voted on it, on the Planning Commission and on the City Council, okay? Nobody has a bone to pick with you, other than the location. That's the whole point. People come to our Main Street to shop and to eat, dine. No offense, but they really don't come to buy a house unless they're going down on the 300 block. And Jim Clissannon is there because he's been here 40 years, and he's grandfathered in, okay? We had a law office in the 200 block, I think Howard Grief. I don't think Howard is there anymore. I think he's probably retired.
Upstairs.
Where?
Howard is upstairs.
He's upstairs. He's on the second floor, yeah. He's on the second floor. His daughter went to McGaw with my daughter, so that's how I came to know Howard. But I don't think he's, is he still there?
Yes, upstairs.
On the second floor? He's still there? Oh, okay. I haven't seen him for a while. But that's where a professional office belongs, is on the second floor. We need, on Main Street, shops and places to eat. And yes, I do share the concern that everybody has, that to allow this use in is precedent-setting. And this is what we have to be careful of, because if you let something in like that, it could be the beginning of the end of Main Street, and we don't want to see that happen. We have a jewel here, and they compare it to Huntington Beach? Oh my God. Huntington, all the kids go to Huntington, and they spend all their nickels. We don't want that here. This is families. This is a whole different thing. Main Street is just like no other. And like I said, here's the Main Street specific plan. People who moved here since '96 do not know what everybody went through to craft this document. And staff doesn't know, because you weren't here, you didn't experience it. And there are other documents out there that were crafted some years back, and then nobody remembers. But the residents do, the ones that were here, they do. And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to vote against this.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Steve. I just want to briefly come to staff's defense, because I read the specific plan, and I just want to make sure that I read it right, in that it does, I mean, I'm hearing that it shouldn't have come to this, but I just want to confirm that the specific plan says that you can have an office on first floor, but you can only do it with the permit and the permission of us, correct? I mean, let me just make sure I understand that.
That's correct. The specific plan provides that path.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing I'll add is, I'm glad we're able to come here in person, because I appreciate the community coming out like this. Thank you. That's all.
I have a question. I have a question of staff. How many open shops are there on Main Street?
Four.
Open, I'm sorry, open shops?
Yeah. How many shops are open for, you know, as in, empty?
Four.
Empty shops.
On the first level?
On the first level.
No, I have not surveyed the number of vacant shops.
I have the addresses right.
But I've seen at least two or three that I know, without actually surveying it.
Right, okay, okay. I just wondered, you know, and there's a lot of talk about the future, and I'm, you know, questioning how many are open, and since we're talking about precedent-setting. What I did like, and I know that I asked this at the beginning, I liked the idea that there was a place to sell and display the work of local artists, and I wanted to be assured that that's really what was going to happen.
That's true.
So that's my comment.
Okay, I have several things to comment. I guess we'll start at the second thing. I walked on Sunday, not on Saturday, because there was no parking, but I walked down and up the street. There are four empty buildings, 219, 113, 128, and 304. And I was actually lobbied by the mayor, and the mayor's argument was, there's plenty of retailers that want to get into Main Street. And I was surprised to see four empty buildings, if there's such a demand. So I think that with the passion that all the people have here, they should be out recruiting retailers to get into those empty spaces. All right. Now, the second thing that I wanted to say was, I read all of the inputs, I summarized them all, and the majority of the arguments against is that it sets a precedent.
Please let him speak.
Pardon me?
I was just telling him to please let you speak.
I'm speaking, right?
Yeah.
So the argument is it sets a precedent. And I'm sorry, but I'm an engineer, and when you say it sets a precedent, it's insulting to me. It's insulting because it says, "I can't evaluate the next one on its own merits. I have to assume that what I decide tonight is going to decide everything I do in the future." And I don't think that's true or fair. So I was insulted by that argument. However, I also found out, because I did a Google search of Realtors in the area, I came up with 19 along the street, or behind the street, or near the area. That's a lot of Realtors, right? So I can't support this, although I did support it last time, mostly because I think that this Realtor can find a space, not on Main Street, and there really is a sentiment that there needs to be retail on Main Street. It doesn't say that in this specific plan. If you want it to say that in a specific plan, then you should put it in there. It's clearly allowed for her to have this, and the staff did their job, they used the criteria that's specified, and it says it's fine. But I'm going to vote against this, because I really think that there's another option for her, it's not too terribly bad, and I really think it's probably the best for the Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a 10-year-old daughter, and I run the silent auction at McGaw for the last four years. So I know almost every single business owner in here, and they're very passionate, they're great human beings, they donate to McGaw, McGaw's well-being all the time. So like, I'm very passionate about this and keeping Main Street what it is. And in my opinion, if we go back to findings number two, the proposed use does not conflict with the specifics plan's goal to establish and maintain a balanced mix of uses that serves the needs of both the local and the non-local populations. I think, based on what we've heard, all the people in here, and the emails that we have, I think that, in my opinion, is to deny this conditional use permit. And now we'd like to make a motion to deny it based on, I'm going to wait for you first, please. Thank you.
I was going to let you make your motion.
I was going to make a motion to deny CUP 22-1, based on findings of serving the needs of both the local and non-local populations, based on everything that we've heard. We've heard quite a few speakers, we have 14 emails. I've been reached out to, I think I get, I live on 14th Street, I think I get stopped every time I walk up and down the street and go down Main Street, and it's all the exact same. And I think based on specifically the needs of both the local and non-local populations, I think that's, in my opinion, merits to deny this.
I'll second that. Can you articulate a little bit more-
And it's, it's all the exact same. And I think based on specifically the needs of both the local and non-local populations, I think that's, in my opinion, merits to, to deny this.
I'll second that. Can you, can you articulate a little bit more what the specific facts are that relate to why you think finding number two cannot be made? And, and the findings are listed in the staff report?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, and I mean, the proposed use, is that what you're, proposed use does not conflict with the specific plan's goal to establish that finding?
Correct. Yes.
And I think specifically both local and non-local populations. The local population has made their voice very, very clear and very adamant that this is not what they want. At the, at the 100 block fronting Main Street.
Okay, the-
I haven't heard one argument for, from any local, or anybody saying they support it. And I think that, I think businesses depend on each other. I think Isabel's Closet depends on somebody else being there to drive up and say, oh, there's Isabel's Closet. There's, there's Endless Summer on this side. There's the Angel Store on this side. You know, Angel started three or four down from there. I'm not really sure how, I walk it enough. I should know. And I think the Seal Beach shop is fairly close to there. And I think they depend on each other to drive business. I, I know, I, just from being on, from Maga auction, I've been fortunate enough to walk into every single store on Main Street, so. But I know a lot of people, they, they don't even realize that some of these places are there until they, until they go to another store right next to them. Oh, that's pretty cool. That's there.
Can I ask for some clarification? That's a lot to agree to in a motion.
Well, my main motion is just the fact that it doesn't serve the needs of the local community.
Right. Wait, I'm sorry.
Well, what I was-
That's my, that's my-
I understand. What I was going to comment on is that the CUP relates to the land use. And so the findings are based on the compatibility of the use in terms of each finding that has to be made. And, and I understand your motion is you don't feel you can make the finding number two.
Mm-hmm.
So it isn't just that there's opposition to it. It's that, that the nature of the use, according to what the testimony was, is inconsistent with the needs of the local community based on the desire to attract pedestrian, pedestrians into onsite sales, that kind of thing. But what I was going to suggest is, we, we don't have an actual resolution of denial because the staff recommendation was to approve. So one option would be-
Put it down.
One option would be to have you continue this to the next meeting, to allow staff to come back with a proposed resolution that you could then vote on. Or alternatively, we can take a 10-minute break and staff can try and put a draft together, circulate it when we come back, and then you can vote on it at that time.
I, I would vote for the 10-minute recess.
Let's get it done tonight.
I agree.
I think you need to-
I'd like to make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the 10-minute recess if that's necessary.
Okay, Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Misetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 for recess.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this because, don't talk.
Excuse me?
The meeting is reconvened. It's 8:58. All members are present. Chair?
Thank you. We have resolution number 22-8 to, to add to the denial.
What I would suggest, if you want, you could propose to amend your motion-
Okay.
-to incorporate the new findings, which are in section four, A, B, C, and D. And then, I think Mr. Misetti seconded the original motion. So if he wants to second your amended motion-
Okay.
-then you can discuss.
Okay. I will read the resolution and then section four only. A resolution of the Seal Beach Planning Commission denying conditionally used permit 22-1 to allow the operation of a business office, real estate office, within a 625-square-foot vacant tenant space on the ground floor of Main Street at 128, 128 Main Street and planning Area 1 of the Main Street specific plan. I'll skip to section four. And there's four parts to it. Section four says, based upon the facts contained in the record, including those stated in the preceding section of this resolution pursuant to section 28-1251E1 of the Main Street specific plan and chapter 11.5.20 of the zoning code of the City of Seal Beach, the planning commission makes the following findings. A, the proposed use is inconsistent with the intent and purpose and vision established for the Main Street specific plan and with the general plan. The objective of the standard is to stress that ground floor Main Street is intended for predominantly pedestrian-oriented activities and commercial sales. Although the Main Street specific plan encourages a mix of land uses, including offices, restaurants, and retail stores, to serve local residents and visitors, the Main Street specific plan provides that its commercial uses are key to the area's special characters. Special character, the proposed real estate office is not a type of use that serves local and visitor needs. The proposed real estate office on the ground floor along Main Street is not conducive to drawing, to residents and visitors to surrounding retail and restaurant uses. Furthermore, Main Street is recognized for its distinctive mixture of retail and service-oriented commercial uses. The proposed use would negatively impact the charm of the area by undermining the pedestrian-friendly environmentally along, environment along Main Street. Number B, or letter B now, the proposed use conflicts with the specific plan's goal to establish and maintain a balanced mix of uses that serves the needs of both local and non-local populations. As stated above, the predominant uses of the ground floor are retail eating and drinking establishments and personal improvement service uses. With the real estate office use, the balance of uses that serve the needs of both local and non-local populations will not be maintained. C, the local size, design, and operational characteristics of the proposed use would not be compatible and will adversely affect uses and properties in the surrounding neighborhood businesses, business office use, as discussed in findings A and B above. D, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed use of the local proposed will be detrimental to the welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity of the proposed use because the proposed real estate office will not contribute to the unique character of Main Street or the qualities that provide the Main Street sense of identity. Main Street is widely renowned as, for its distinctive mixed use of retail and service-oriented commercial uses, the proposed use would be detrimental, impact, would detrimentally impact the charm of the area by undermining the pedestrian-friendly environment of first-floor commercial and service-oriented businesses. We have any discussion on this?
First, first you need someone, Mr. Misetti, I don't know if you want to second the amended motion, or somebody else could.
Yes, I'll second it.
We have any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just have a brief statement here. You know, I think that, I think this goes a little far for my taste, because, you know, personally, I think Ms. Geiter, if I said that right? I mean, there's a lot in here that says that real estate offices are bad on first-floor Main Street. Okay? Jim Klessanen has a real estate office on Main Street. I don't mind it. But he's been there a long time and he's a very important part of this community. And I appreciate that. I think that Lorette Murfree, who's sitting in the back there who spoke to us earlier, could set up a really nice first-floor, real estate office on first floor on Main Street. It would be lovely. I think it would contribute to the community. And there's a lot in here that says, this is really going to kill the feel of Main Street. And it may, if we did this over and over again. I agree with that. And I've heard you all, and I, and I agree with you. And I don't support this office. But I think this goes a little far for me, because it's just saying, real estate offices are, are bad and should never be here. But I'm telling you, if I walk around in like Avalon, this is what I said when we had this meeting a couple of, a month ago. When I walk around Avalon, there's a real estate office. I always stop by. I always look at it. I talk to the Realtor when I go there. I think it adds to the community. When I go to Coronado, there's a real estate office there, right on the main, on Orange Avenue. And it has, you know, it shows you what's for sale. And I stop and I look, and you talk to other people there. So I don't want to kind of go that far to say that. But I do want to say that I appreciate what the community has come out and said, is that you don't feel that that is right here. And that's really what I support. So, you know, for what it's worth, I just, you know, I just, I just think this goes a little far for me. I think there's a little too much subjectivity in here, for my opinion. But, you know, that's just what I think. I mean, again, I'll be very clear. I, I've, I've heard the community and, and I agree with you. But I just, this goes just a little bit far for me. That's all.
I don't disagree, but I also legal, the legality issues of this is definitely not my forte, so.
Well, I would, if there are pieces that one of you want to propose be removed, you can discuss that. Or if you have language that would soften it?
I mean, I'd go so far as to say if three, I mean, if, if, I mean, I don't feel the need to rewrite all this. I just may or may not vote for it. I'd like to hear from everybody else. But I'm just telling you how I kind of feel about it.
Say, given that they wrote this in 15 minutes, pretty good.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. I, I concur with that.
Mary Ann?
Let's not get picky.
Yes?
I just want to say that section seven should be section five and section eight should be section six. The numbers are wrong. Sorry, nobody else would have found that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's call for the question and vote.
Sorry?
Call for the question and vote.
Sorry, I turned myself off. You could call, one of you could call for the question and vote on it and see what happens. I mean, as-
We have a motion.
Commissioner Campbell indicated, we put this together, staff did, based on what we heard.
Deputy City Clerk Instrom, we have a vote by roll call?
Yeah. Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote? Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote? Commissioner Misetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you.
And there is a 10-day appeal period from this decision, which starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Are there any commission concerns?
One question. In all the correspondence that we received, one of the ladies wrote about the little parklets, little dining areas out in the street. Well, if the restaurants are all open again, why do we need these parklets that's taking up badly needed parking? Is that something that we should look at, that staff should look into?
I believe staff is looking at that, correct?
That's correct. There is a process that we've started to reengage the, the Main Street Advisory Committee to look at a number of issues along Main Street, including the existing parklets.
I know O'Malley's took theirs out.
Or will the restaurants open again? With inside dining?
Yes. Yes.
Well, if they are, then, you know, personally, I don't want to eat next to the curb with all the fumes. But, you know, if we need parking on Main Street-
How, how long was the temporary use of that? Is it, is it through this year?
So here in Seal Beach, the, the parklets have been extended through the end of September. The state law has, allows extension of parklets or similar type uses that take up parking spaces through July 2024.